I would. Yep, as a person.
You're gonna be able to work that out.
Fair comment.
Would you just go ahead now? I'm getting out.
Did you hear from Terry?
Terry. Okay. So, six o'clock, we'll get started with our work session. So, we're doing our work session tonight on Department of Corrections. So, about a month ago, we had some of our corrections staff who's joined us again tonight, who came during public comment, and they talked about some issues and things that were going on in Corrections. And we had asked some questions about that, and staff said they had some solutions at the time that they hadn't discussed with the county executive at the time. So, obviously, they wanted to talk to him before talking with us. And our corrections director wasn't at that meeting either. So, it was a good chance to get everybody together. So, we're doing a work session, Mr. Brazel. How about that?
That's unbelievable.
See?
Good.
I know. It's your second one in three meetings. So, there you go. So, it's important to note, work session. We're not going to vote to approve anything tonight. Work sessions are learning sessions. So, we are here to learn what are the issues that we see, what are the solutions being proposed. We are not here to negotiate with the union. That's not our job. So, we are a legislative function. The deal that gets made with your union gets done between the administration and the union. It doesn't get done between the council and the union. So, there is a memorandum of understanding that I believe goes from August 15th to September 15th, where the union is mandated through that MOU to negotiate with administration. I don't want tonight to get-
They're bringing in their budget requests.
Right, and the budget request. So, I don't want to jump in the middle of that part tonight. I want to learn tonight, and I hope that is the mindset that we are going to approach tonight with. So, thanks for everybody for being here early. Councilwoman York couldn't make the meeting tonight. She's gonna miss the work session, and she'll miss the regular meeting. But she said she is gonna go back and re-watch this to get caught up on everything so she knows. With that, I would kick it to administration to kick us off and kind of give us a lay of the land from your perspective.
Yeah, so I'd start off by, it's on.
Just pull it down a little bit, so, there you go.
Short person's problem, sorry.
It's all good.
So, over every, basically like march on, as various departments have issues that come up, we're working on those issues. Corrections is something that we've been looking at. There, a number of their employees, not all, but a number of the employees who work in Corrections are part of the group that Human Resources studies annually for where they fall in the marketplace. So, that's part of what we'll be talking about, too. But there have also been some things that as Director Keen has raised to us, and one of which you all just recently passed, moving seven of his employees to an eight-hour day, five days a week, because he believes those are jobs he'll have an easier time hiring. There have been some things like that that we have been looking at and moving towards doing. And one of the things that we hadn't had a chance to talk to the county executive about is the sheriff made a very generous offer about two months ago to take on doing the transport of the prisoners to even things like medical. And so, we were putting together a proposal, which as soon as the county executive approved it, we set up something to talk to the sheriff. And I talked to him today. They've gone over the proposal, so we'll be working to finalize that. So, hopefully, that'll work to take some of the burden off of inside. All of that to say, a number of these things are things that we have been working on. But most of what we're gonna review tonight are budget-dependent. There are things that it takes money to do, and that's gonna depend on how our revenues are coming in. So, we'll go through that as well. First thing that I wanted to go through, though, is what have we accomplished at Corrections at all so far? And that has to do with, we've tried to use any federal funds that we've gotten because we knew we were, we had insufficient funds to do like a major, ultimately eighty, ninety million dollar renovation of the building, and the building was thirty-plus years into twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week use, and it needed renovation. So, so far, we've gotten booking redone. I know that some of you have seen booking in the past. We've recently finished the renovation of the fifth floor, and we're well into phase one of the third floor. The fifth floor is open, and I appreciate Councilman Swanson going down and looking at that. I know that you took the time to go through it. And we'll be in substantial completion on phase two, which is about forty, forty-five percent of the third floor, the end of July of next year, including additional beds coming out of that. And as part of that, you know, there are things directly addressing some of the needs of the employees who work the third floor. And I should remind you, the third floor is where far and away the majority of the detention area is. So, you've got booking, and on the floor with booking, we have some units. And we also have some units on the first floor where you come in off the street. But by far and away, the majority of the population is ultimately on the third floor. It's probably the most expensive real estate in all of St. Charles County because of the security nature of it. When an employee's working that third floor, and they get their break area, or they get their mealtime, they don't have much of a place to go right now. By the end of October, hopefully the middle of it, but certainly by the end of October, we will have a major break area on three where they have a large commercial refrigerator for their use, an ice maker, multiple microwaves, tables and chairs for them to sit, soda and food machines, coffee service, and a private staff bathroom. So, it will allow them to get to a break quicker and to be able to use their time more efficiently. We've also, as I mentioned before, a couple of things. We've done some things to try to better align staffing so that the staff that are in there as COs and as CPOs can be more effectively used. Seven positions have been moved to day shift only that align with tack, tasks that are done at that point of the week. We're working with the sheriff to take over most of the transport of prisoners for medical and other appointments. Dan has been meeting with the courts and the prosecuting attorney's office concerning continuances, trial setting, bonds, et cetera. Dan also regularly now produces a report on inmates and detainees who have been in the jail for a significant period of time, under three hundred days, over three hundred to five hundred days, over five hundred days, over a thousand days. And the prosecutor, Mr. McCullough, has been extremely responsive to that. Some things they can't do anything about when they've got inmates who are awaiting Department of Mental Health assistance, that, or reviews, those take forever, can take upwards of half a year to a year. Yeah, and people you think have just moved into the ability to get them evaluated and get them out, suddenly get reoriented, they've decided a new priority list, and they're right back down the list again and waiting. So, it is a population that takes a lot of staff time, a lot of staff effort, and we can't control in any way, shape, or form when they're actually leaving for those services. Not that Corrections actually controls much. I mean, they are ultimately dealing with caring for the custody of people who've been put there by the courts. And also, Dan has a continuing need to do training with staff. That has been taking away from time that's normally on the units. In August, at an employee's suggestion, he's made the offer to staff that if they do want to take their classes on their days off, he'll pay overtime rate to minimize his staff shortages. And he's had seven or eight employees take him up on that already, so. Sorry. So, these are considerations that we've come up with for the '26 budget. I'm gonna do the ones first that affect all the employees. So, as you all certainly know, we have employees who pay, are paid out of the general fund, and we have employees who are paid out of the special funds. So, the highway department, for instance, are paid from the road and bridge funds. Corrections is a general fund employee. And so, they're part of the group where each one percent of a raise that the county executive will bring to you costs seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars between its impact on the direct salaries for those raises and the impact of having to pay the increased FICA and loggers when those salaries go up. So, as you will probably remember, because I think everybody except you, Councilwoman Baker and Councilwoman York, were part of the group here when the council made the decision that a priority for them was to give people their years of service and then try to keep up with that by giving at least a minimum of two percent raise each year. And so, that two percent raise will cost one point five million dollars approximately. So, that's the first thing that we committed as an administration that we would come up with after we paid the bills.
What's the cost of living, Joanne? What's the cost of living?
One point nine percent, it came out just the other day.
At one point nine percent almost every year, right?
Well, it's been up and down, as you know, from the, I mean, at one point, it was running, what, seven percent?
So, when you go one percent, then they're not really getting a raise.
Well, that's just it. And as you know from the last few years, and I'll go through that in a few minutes, the county executive always likes to do more than what the minimum was. But I'm just trying to tell you, that's what it takes for every one percent. And that's what we've committed to put together before we go spend money on anything else.
Joanne, is that seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, is that based on all the positions being filled?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Which we know it hasn't been filled. So, the impact is, is it safe to say less than that, considerably less?
Yeah, I mean, well, not considerably less. He's twenty-five down in his department and-
Well, you guys said forty last time. Last year it was forty.
That's including the fourteen that aren't even funded, that haven't been funded in the budget for two years. We had given Dan-
Is a one percent raise, are you saying just Corrections, or are you saying all county employees?
All county employees.
That's what I, yeah, that's-
Oh, I thought that was all Corrections.
No, 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 no.
So, just so we're all clear, that's seven, seven and a quarter is basically, you give a one percent raise to county employees, not just Corrections.
Right, and the ones who are on the general fund. So, this doesn't include the Parks Department employees. This doesn't include highway-
Right.
-or anybody who's paid out of a special fund.
General fund.
They're seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred-
Do we have an idea what the Corrections Department, solely just for them, what that would, what that budgetary impact would be?
I have no idea, but in the thirty-plus years I've been here, the county has never given just a raise to one department.
Yeah, but you're giving fifty-two and out to one department, so, I mean-
I'm sorry?
We're giving different benefits to other departments that they don't get, though. That's the difference.
Can we wait until they finish this presentation, and then we start?
I'll agree with you, Mike, but the fact is, we're here to talk about Corrections, and this is a county-wide issue, so I-
But I think she's trying to get through this, to get to Corrections-specific. If you'll give her a chance to get, she said, "I wanted to go through general considerations first." So, I'm just worried if we get bogged down here, we're not gonna get to Corrections.
All right, let's go.
So, the 2026 studies, which are every, as you remember, every three years, every single department's employees are studied in some classification. And in addition to that, we have certain departments that are studied every year as to whether or not those positions should be reclassified. Correctional officers and correctional peace officers are part of that. And then we have specific department requests. So, this year, aside from the annual review people and the specific department requests, it was about fifteen percent of the workforce. So, we'll be looking at, how do we fund those? Because those, if we've been told by HR in the past that those need to be reclassified, we've normally accepted that off the bat. So, in addition to that, there's requests for new positions by departments. And the ones who are from the general fund, and then the employee healthcare costs are going up about ten and a half percent right now. So, we'll have to fund the costs since, as you know, we're directly funded for our employee healthcare. So, that'll be up around nineteen, twenty million dollars a year out of the, out of the general fund, which is about a two million dollar approximately increase over the current year. Then, in Corrections specifically, what we've been looking at closely is the reclassification of the correctional officers from a C four to a C five. This would move the minimum from forty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-two to fifty-two thousand two twenty-six before any COLA to the system. Then, you may remember that when we were under the pandemic emergency, we paid a premium for overtime of a flat ten dollars an hour because we were allowed to under ARPA. And so, the county executive had made a recommendation to you all, and you were good with it at the time. When they declared the pandemic emergency over at the federal level, they denied us the opportunity to continue that. While we don't have anywhere near that kind of money, we've been looking at the possibility of going back to some overtime premium. We've been looking at two dollars an hour flat on top of the regular time and a half. Based on looking at last year's overtime numbers, we've estimated that would take us about an additional eighty-five thousand in overtime funding. And I'm just assuming then, obviously, to get to that amount, that the twenty-five, or twenty-six overtime would be about the same. We've been looking at the possibility of shift differentials. This has been something Dan's brought up for a couple of years to us. And we've been looking at it around employees who start their shift at 7:00 PM or later and conclude it by 7:00 AM. And at a dollar an hour additional, that would cost us about two hundred and nineteen thousand to have a shift differential. We've also been looking at milestone payments. I don't know that this was effective as the others, but it's certainly something, if we could find the money for, in Corrections, at fifteen years, seven of seventy-six employees for the county who have fifteen or more years but less than twenty are in Corrections. In the twenty-year group, six, pardon me, eight of sixty-one employees around the county who have twenty to twenty-five years are in Corrections. And of the group who have twenty-five years or more, ten of a hundred and four employees in that category are in Corrections. So, we'd end up with about twenty-five employees who would get milestone payments. And then, we also looked at educational incentive. As I'm sure you all know, a number of years ago, when the county executive was first elected, he wanted to see the sheriff's department at the time work to get some degrees. He felt it helped with the, their ability to go through the type of tough situations they're in. And so, there's two thousand dollars for getting an associate's, another two thousand when you get your bachelor's, and another two thousand, that one thousand, pardon me, when you get a master's degree. And so, we looked at what would that do to bring some additional funding into the pay for Corrections? And Dan looked at records, and it looks like he's got about thirty staff who would benefit by that.
Is that an annual cost, annual pay?
Yes, it stays in their pay.
Okay.
And, and actually, it goes into their base pay. So, like when they get their COLA and their, their pay raise, merit pay raise, it increases the value of having that in their base pay as well.
Jan, did you guys look at the list that was sent to you by Baker? That, all the major pieces that they're talking about? It's not, this is the minor stuff. And pay increase has been talked about, but it's not one of the major issues. So, I'm just curious if you read this, what we sent you? Because everything you've said, you said we've looked at or we've talked about, but nothing ever happens, nothing ever changes.
That's not true. There are things that have changed, and I'll get to that.
Does looking at it mean you're gonna make these changes? Or does that mean you're just looking at it, have a conversation next year?
If we're going to have the funding to do it, these are things that we would be funding in a budget request to you all.
Did you guys look at this list that was sent to you?
I looked at it briefly. And we also requested Mr. Reagan come in and have a meeting with us.
Well, some of the biggest grievances is they're working double late, and they can't have time with their kids, and they're getting mandatory time. That's a major problem. Twenty-seven hundred and fifty officers are less, on the, on the job, less than one year. You talk about all this cost, and the cost of making increases in whatever they, the salaries, making increases and giving them better time off. You're gonna, you're spending more money by this constant in and out the door, these swinging doors. And are those costs gonna be in here? How many times people are quitting, and then we gotta retrain them? Because those are significant costs. It seems like the jail's been dysfunctional for a while, and there's a lot of these, these things that these folks brought to us with their sincere concerns, and it doesn't seem like we're talking about those issues. And it's a concern of mine because they're barely hanging on. They don't want to even work here anymore. They love their job, but they don't like working here.
And show me a jail where this isn't true.
That I don't know because I don't work in any other county or live in any other county. But I do know that as legislators, it's our job to try to come up with a solution. And I'd like to see some hardcore solutions because we are not retaining cuff term. The environment in the jail for the employees is terrible, and we're not retaining the employees. And they're not even reaching out to their friends to come work at this county jail because it's not beneficial to them. There's so many things that they're doing that they treat them poorly. And the other thing is, is we, you talk about fairness. You guys make them stand by the law enforcement standards, but they don't get treated like the law enforcement standard. All their guidelines are supposed to be by law enforcement. I don't even know if I'm using the right term, but the law enforcement standards. But then, they don't get the fifty-two and out, or fifty-five and out, whatever it is. I don't know exactly what a term is. Yeah, they don't get that. And then, but the other officers do. There's a lot of things they don't get, and their environment's probably, that's much worse than being out on the road as a police officer.
So, you're not correct about what you just said. They are not qualified under the original fifty-five and out. You had to be a commissioned law enforcement officer under the laws of the state of Missouri. In other words, the only people inside Corrections eligible for that were CPOs. A few years ago, the state of Missouri changed and created what's called a public safety category. And the public safety category has in it two groups of employees, dispatchers and non-commissioned correctional officers. And if you do one, you have to do both. We commissioned a study, which we shared with Mr. Reagan at the time, that came back from the state of Missouri, yes, fourteen point four million dollars is what it takes to join fifty-five and out for the correctional officers and the dispatch officers. We didn't have it. We don't have it. We don't have the money. It's not up to us to just say, "Oh, you're in fifty-five and out," unless we can come up with the money.
Can I, can I ask a question? We have been down, and I thought Joe was right. We were down, I think the comment was, we were down forty employees in the department, in Corrections Department. Is that, is that an accurate number?
So, that is the fourteen that are unfunded.
All right, so twenty-six.
And the, yeah, well, it's twenty-five.
All right, twenty, we have, we're twenty-five employees down. And I'm sure you budgeted that we were gonna be a full, the full budget for all these employees being there. So, there's money left over. Is there a reason why we haven't hired an outside firm to try to hire, try to fill that department? I mean, because to me, and I agree with Councilman Brazel, the underlying issue, paying all that other stuff is great, but the problem is that when you're working eight hours and your kid's got a soccer game, and they're told, "You have, you can't go to that soccer game. You have to work," it doesn't matter if we pay them ten dollars more an hour. That's gonna be a problem. And I think a reasonable solution is to try to find an outside firm to try to fill these positions, even on the temporary basis. Maybe they can work there and then become a full-time employee, which happens a lot. It seems like a logical solution, but has that been looked at?
We looked at what other departments were doing, at St. Louis County, St. Louis City. Nobody's able to fill their jobs in full.
That doesn't mean we can't.
Joanne, is it common?
It does.
Well, if I may-
Yes, sir.
To go along with Councilwoman Baker, I don't know, Dan, if you want to jump in because since I'm the only one who visited a jail in this past month, if you want to come up and talk about what you're doing for recruitment, because we had a long conversation about that using inde- that using Indeed and increasing the funds that you're using to recruit, the percentage that are coming in, that you get applications and the ones that wash out because they just don't make it or they want to go in a different direction? Because you gave me a lot of good information that day.
Good evening. We've always done job fairs. You know, job fairs, I know the county ran a job fair. We've gone to job fairs over the years. We've done social media. It's not pulling individuals. Recently, on May 31st of this year, we contracted with Indeed. And I can tell you, I can give you some numbers that just kind of hit you a little bit. From May 31st to August 14th, Indeed sent 957 career seekers to our job site. 957. Feel free to write that down. Out of that 957, 165 applied. At that 165, 119 tested, 92 passed. And after doing background checks, we interviewed 40. From there, nine declined and we hired 13. Recently, we just had testing last week. We sent out 56 invites for individuals coming to test.
Under 13 you hired, are they still with us?
Yes.
How long ago did you hire them?
What's that?
How long did you hire, how long ago was it?
Between May 31st and August 14th.
Okay.
Recently, we invited 56 people in for testing. Out of that, they tested last Thursday, 10 came in for testing out of 56 and eight passed. So we're in the process now, out of that eight, we're going to start our background checks and then we're going to start setting up for interviews who's left over. But I agree, me so heartily, corrections is the toughest law enforcement job out there. I'll stand down. These guys, they're my family. I love them. But in the same token, when we talk about corrections, prior to COVID, or whatever you want to call the events of 2020, corrections was hard to fill. Prior to COVID, when COVID hit, five years later, four and a half years later, corrections is still in a staffing crisis across the country. It's not St. Charles. It's everywhere. So when you look at these numbers, they don't lie. When you have people apply or review and they don't follow through, we hire and we interview the best candidates we want. I refuse to lower our standards like some other county facilities have done. I refuse to do that because that just creates more of an issue down the road. But when you have, out of 165, 40 are qualified for interviews and you're able to pull in 13, it's a slow process.
And this is all through Indeed? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Couldn't we throw out a wider net and use other, other employment agencies? I mean, it just seems like there's a lot of, and sure, you may get 500 applications and you may get 40 people out of that 500 that qualify and meet background checks. But if we throw out a wider net and use other agencies or employment firms, it seems like we could maybe get better results to help these people so that they can have a life outside of the Department of Corrections.
Right. And the one thing we've changed a few years ago was when we talked about volunteers and mandates. Now, right when we switched to 12-hour shifts, we were doing a lot of mandates. And I know that we were doing a lot of mandates. Something we did, we implemented was, all right, if you volunteer, it moves your mandate down to the bottom of the list. That still holds true today. So if I know there's an event going on, officers can volunteer to work overtime and they can, their name will move to the bottom of the list. I have a list right here, the most recent list for Platoon B. Out of these dates, there's one person mandated on this list. The rest were volunteers. Now, I understand that some people are going to say, well, if I don't volunteer, I'm going to be mandated. That's a true statement. On this list, again, another group, everyone volunteered for it. So these were just the most recent lists. I didn't go searching for anything. I just grabbed the most recent list and brought it forward.
Dan, can you just give them an example of how that works? Because I'm not sure that everybody's clear on what you're saying.
About mandating?
Just about overtime in general and how it, it works. Because I've heard several council members talk about the mandated overtime and missing family events. And after the last meeting, don't mean to hijack your thing, but I went back and looked at, because I get a daily report. Every morning I get a corrections report and it'll show me the overtime generated for the two shifts before that. And in that report, it'll say volunteered for overtime or mandated overtime. So I can see the difference between the two. And I went back 30 days and looked at 30 days worth of reports and I found five four-hour shifts in a month's time that were mandated. There were certainly a lot of volunteer overtime shifts, but a very, very small percentage of those overtime shifts are mandated overtime. And I think that's an important distinction and something we wanted to talk to Mr. Reagan about so we can kind of work through that issue and we haven't had the opportunity yet. So Dan, go ahead.
Right. So, but yeah, that's basically if, for instance, if I'm Platoon A, this is Platoon A right here, the group of individuals that are relieved and is Platoon D, our night shift. If our Platoon D is short, one or two officers will ask for volunteers. If we have no volunteers to help out on that night shift, then it goes into a mandate. We mandate the last, the next person in line to work overtime.
Dan, if I may, being a public sector employee, I get messages all day long that says, we need you to cover X class because it's your off hour. Sometimes it may not be mandated, but it's felt like it because they give the long thing and you don't want to let your teams down. And I don't know if that's kind of what's happened with some of them is that they feel like, yes, this other one, I'm going to do it because we're all friends and we help each other out. So as much as it may not feel like it's mandated, it may feel more emotionally mandated with it because you want to be a team player.
Yeah.
And from what I've talked to these individuals in the past, they're a tight group and that's why they're all here and all. So I think there is a little designation in there we got to be careful about when you say mandated. I hate on a Friday being told I have to cover a class that's six-hour, but I'm going to do it because I'm a team player. So I think we just got to be a little careful in that.
And I get it. I understand that, you know? Like I said, this was something we implemented a few years ago about when you volunteer, your name moves to the bottom of the mandate list. Still doesn't take away the fact, we're short-staffed. We've been short-staffed. From when I came here in 2018, we were short-staffed. If you remember when we sat here in a nice table, we talked about staffing, we were short-staffed. That hasn't changed. Okay? We put, implemented new funding and this and that throughout the years and it's corrections. This is the challenge we're faced with. It's not St. Charles County. It's down there every county out there, every state out there, the Bureau of Prisons. Every one of them are suffering for correctional staff.
Dan, is it common practice when someone does do overtime? When you say overtime, is it a four-hour shift or a double, is it an eight and an eight or an eight and a four?
Our staff work 12-hour shifts. So if they work over, it'd be a four-hour.
So it's 12 plus four?
Yes.
Okay, so if they do a plus four and they get time and a half, correct?
Yes.
Is this standard practice if they have to, if their kid gets sick or something like that and they got to take PT for that, that they don't get their time and a half?
From what I understand how it works is they have to work a total of 168 hours before it turns over to overtime, correct?
So you mean, so 40 hours a week, 40, yeah, right? Yeah.
Correctional staff work 168 hours in a 28-day cycle. Okay? They have to hit the 128 days, or 128, 168 hours, my apologies.
In 28 days.
In a 28-day cycle. Anything worked over 168 hours.
Is time and a half.
Is time and a half.
But if they have to take PT, if something comes up, do they lose that time and a half if they already served it?
Correct. Isn't that, is that correct? Did you hear?
So is that standard practice? That, you know, you work your 175 hours or whatever it is and you're taking, taking one for the team, working the extra time and all that, then your kid breaks his arm and you lose that, if it's 160 hours you worked 175 hours, you lose that 15 hours of time and a half? That's what you're telling me?
That's been a standard practice since I've been here.
Is that, is that normal?
It's, yeah, it's standard across our entire system.
Nothing needs to change. That's not right. Is that a law or is that something that we?
It's an ordinance that you passed.
Yeah, yeah.
And passed again, and again.
I've heard on some student stuff before, so I. That's embarrassing that we do that.
So I, I think it's fair to say, we all understand it's short, it's hard, we get that. Where are we in terms of solutions? So we had talked about, I appreciate where we are and all of the solutions are going to come down to money. And we're going to have to find the money to do some of these solutions. But in terms of what are we proposing as solutions to try and help the issue?
So we've been showing you some of the solutions that we've been trying to do. I mean, we want to stay up with the raises until we have some idea where the revenue is. We don't know whether that's going to be a 2% recommendation or more than that.
Okay.
But I mean, if you look.
So we're doing raises, classifications, possible bump for education.
Let me run to this. So if you'll look back, this is the four-year history of where we've come since 2022. So in '22, and that was the year before we did the years of service, we had a 7% change, 2% COLA base, 5% merit. In '23, we picked up the years of service. So you had wildly different raises for various employees that year, depending upon how many years they'd been with us. If you had somebody who'd been with us 20 or 25 years, they got much bigger than that average. If somebody had only been here eight or nine years, they were probably looking closer to the average. But we did a 2% COLA and all of the raises beyond that were based beyond, on years of service that the employee had served with us. 25 years being the max out. In '24, we did a 2% COLA and a 3% merit raise. And you can see the overall average increase in that year was just barely under $1,800. And then this year, we did a 3% COLA and a 3% merit and the overall average increase was just barely over $2,300. So if the higher up we can get the COLA, the higher up we can get the merit raise, that right off the bat helps. In addition to that, let me go back, well, let me show you this real quickly. Because somebody brought up last time Franklin County. Franklin County is right now paying more than we are. I don't know if that's a drivable distance for a lot of people, but they are in a sense for us in the region now a competitor. Beyond that, you know, we are way above. So if we can get to the very first thing on that corrections, and I know Joe didn't like this list, but if we can get to the very first thing on the corrections list, we believe that we need to move the correctional officers from a C4 to a C5. That changes the starting salary from 48,582 to 52,226 before a COLA change. And obviously with COLA, the whole range moves forward by that percentage. So we would clearly either be neck and neck with Franklin County or we would be ahead of them, depending upon what we can put together. Overtime premiums, it doesn't help prevent people, to Councilman Brazel's remark again, from having to do overtime, but it at least gives them better compensation for having to do it. Same thing with shift differential. People hate doing the night shift, I understand. And so we're trying to do something more towards paying that shift. And then, yeah, I mean, milestone payments and educational incentive, we know are a far less effective response to that. We don't have either of these retirement options on our list. At 14.4 million, the last time they studied it to move into 55 and out, at 40 million to move to L6, which is a two-times multiplier rather than a 1.5, we don't have the, we don't have the cash to do that and we don't see where we will anytime in the future. So those are the major things that we were looking at. We can certainly look at seeing if there's anybody out there who's effective at recruiting. We haven't seen it so far, but you know, I'm certainly not wiping your thought off the page because if there is somebody who's effective at recruiting these, but we just haven't, talking to other jurisdictions, we haven't seen it. And that's our problem right now is for the most part, with the lager's payments are already going up because of they're re-studying us on a continuous basis as they do everybody. Our healthcare costs are increasing. We're, our average inmate count is going up and so our inmate health costs are going to increase significantly and they are not any small part of what we face on a regular basis. The ARPA funds are going to be gone at the end of '26, so we're going to face 16 police officers over there that we don't have any funding in the current general revenue for. We're losing the adult marijuana use, so we were hoping to cover some of that with it. That's not going to happen. We're getting killed on some grants that we've had every year for decades in some instances. We're facing, you know, the freeze in Senate Bill 3, that's not going to really hit us very much though. And there's no additional payments anymore for the family arena, but that's a very small thing. So that's kind of, the biggest thing is simply that, in that blue heading there, that sales tax collected through seven months is only 77,000 ahead of last year, which doesn't even meet this year's 2% predicted revenue growth. So if we can come up with the money, those are the things we had. Is it a miracle? No.
Mr. Holland?
Yeah, I, I see two things here. Number one, most of the things that you're talking about, I think would be very, very good to help these folks and also to, in retention of the people that we have. I'm not sure that many of these things are going to solve the crisis when it comes to staffing. Okay? You know, you'd have to ask our HR person though, if you, if you bumped your salaries up $4,000 a year, does, does, does that attract more applicants? Or I guess to the director, if you have more applicants at a higher price, do you get better quality people? So I see two problems here. One is to, you know, to try to see if we can, you know, do things to, to help the folks that we have. And I think a big percentage of that would simply be to get to the point where we're close to having max or the minimum staff, the amount of staff that we're supposed to have. And I don't know how we get there.
So, so Councilman, you're not wrong. Two problems. But you'd be surprised, some of the things that you look at that look like they're truly retention programs, you'd be surprised that they could also be a recruitment program because you get other employees at other correctional facilities, which you're trying to, to leverage to come over to work for us, that are taking advantage of some of those existing programs where they work and they're not willing to let them go. So they may come over here for $2,000 a year, but it might not be $2,000 a year because they have a shift differential over there. So you see a shift differential here and you think, yeah, it helps reward the people that work the night shift, when in fact it could be a recruitment tool because it's additional income for somebody that wants to work a midnight shift because there are people out there that do want the midnight shift. So it's a little more complicated than that. You heard me say last month when we were talking about this, there's no magic bullet. If there, if there was, we'd fire it. It's going to be a whole host of small solutions, including capital investment in the building. That's why Joanne talked about it so much, that, that help us solve the problem. Maybe it's, it's getting a little bit of help from an outside recruitment agency. We're not opposed to that. But what we want to do too, is we heard what they said, Councilman Brazel, I've read this. Some of these things in here are issues to work through with administration and with, with the FOP or with Lodge 42. It shouldn't be sent to you. We should be able to sit down and talk about these and work them through because there's very little budget impact on a lot of this stuff that's in this document. Not that there aren't huge issues within this document that are budgetary, but there are some that we could work through. But we need to sit down and talk to them to find out, okay, if we've got X amount available to throw at this problem. But we need to sit down and talk to them to find out, okay, if we've got X amount available to throw at this problem, what's the number one priority? And the 55 and out just isn't practical right now.
Have you looked at 80 and out for countywide?
It's even worse.
Is it?
That's why it's not, not up there.
You said 14 million for the 55. What would be the countywide?
It would be somewhere between the 40 million and the 14 million. It might even be north of 40.
For 80 and out, for all employees?
That's why nobody does it anymore. St. Louis County went away from it years ago.
Oh, they did?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Mr. Swanson.
Yes, I have one question, Joanne. For the reclassification from C4 to C5, what is the fiscal impact of that?
I, I don't have the number off the top of my head, to tell you the truth. I can, I can ship it to you.
Yes, that'd be great, thank you. I was just curious to see what that is, of getting that starting salary up to the 52,226, and just what it is from our end of budget. That's just something I'd like to know.
And I will tell you, too, that we've always had the HR staff study who's ever in those reclassifications years with hands off by the administration. They go out and they do a market study. So if they come back and they tell us, these are the nine positions, and those nine positions may have 400 employees in them, or they may have 110 employees in them, but these are the positions that need to be reclassed, because we are no longer lined up with the market. We have accepted that list as administration. We've not said, oh, we're going to do these three, but not the, because we prefer these. So if they come back and, and they tell us, you know, it's, it's these people from Highway, and it's this person from the prosecutor, or this type of position from the prosecutor's office, and it's this, we have always just accepted those. So the whole theory, for some of you who've sat through that presentation over and over again, and I know there's a few of you who are new or who haven't, but HR has always said, if we're going to stay with market, we have to have a consistent group of people we do our comparison against, and we have to stay in that market, and know that that's where we're drawing our people from. So that's, when we look at this, we look at, what's the raise? What are the classifications before we let anybody ask us for a new employee out of GR?
I know the city of St. Peters had 80 and out, I don't know if they still do, but the employees contribute to that, I think, like 5% of their income.
Oh, do they?
For, to get the 80 and out.
I know, city of St. Charles just went to the L6, and they're having their employees do 4%. They're the last city that just switched to it. So, you know, that gives, right now, our employees get that 2% bump till they hit Medicare at their age 65, and then they lose that bump, and it goes back down to a 1.5 marker, multiplier. So the L6 would keep it at their lifetime for retirement at the 2%, but that's the one that is 40 million.
Any other questions?
I got one question on the, on the inmates' medical treatments. From what I understand, years ago, we would, if there was an inmate that was a, like, low-level criminal or low bond, we would furlough them if they had a medical condition, that needed some kind of surgery or operation, we'd furlough them. But now, what I understand we do is we pay for the surgery and.
That's not true. We, we can't furlough anybody. We go to the court. His office goes immediately on Dan's call, looking for the judge who sentenced the person, or to the duty judge, if we can't, to try to get those people furloughed. Some of these people, they can't furlough. I mean, we had one, I don't know, about a year ago, that I was desperately wanting out, because Dan had all kinds of problems. The gentleman was in there for child molestation. Prosecutor's office isn't going to let him out.
No, I agree with that, but, so you're saying, and I'm, I'm asking questions.
We follow the exact same procedure.
So is it the judges that, like, if it was a criminal, if there's such criminals that are not high level? I don't know what the, I'm not the high R of criminals, I'm not in that world. But do they, do you try to furlough them in that pay for their?
Absolutely.
Yeah, anybody that has definitely a medical condition, if they go to the hospital for a few days, that's one thing. But if we see that, hey, this person's got to get surgery, he's got to get this and that, we're making phone calls to the county council's office to say, hey, what can we do to get this individual off us? You can look at furloughs, but just keep in mind, what a furlough does is get my officers back to the, to the jail. We're still responsible for the medical expense. We would have to get them completely released off of us, for us not to be responsible for those monies anymore. So when we have a, a case where an individual's at the hospital, we reach out to our attorneys. They work with the prosecutors and the, and the judges to see if we can get them off. You got to understand where the courts are coming from. They're looking at risk factors to the public compared to what we're dealing with, with an inmate in the, in the jail. And they have to weigh that, because if they release this guy, might even be just in for a Mr. Meter, but they release that individual, and then he gets out and goes and murders someone, or does something else.
Sounds familiar.
It's, 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 it's back on us.
Oh, I understand that.
You know, so that's.
I was just asking, I, I don't know what that's.
They, they were in the last week for one that was a race against time. And, you know, a judge who wasn't immediately available, and they got to the judge and explained the situation a matter of a couple of hours before the person went into surgery, for a very expensive surgery. And they made the case for us and got the person released. They are constantly ready to do that, and they have been very successful at doing that.
So how long before all of construction is done at the jail? We had looked at, a few years ago, probably pre-COVID at this point, 93 million was the price tag. I'm sure that's gone up, because we piecemealed things together, because we didn't have 93 million. But how long, you talked about, three is going to be done, or two is going to be done?
Phase two of the third floor. I know it's confusing, sorry about that. Will be done at the end of July of next year. And then what'll be left is on the third floor, those big units that have the center courtroom, or courtrooms, the center area for outdoor exercise, those will be redone. And it'll come around the corner, and we'll have the anti-legature, in other words, anti-suicide furniture in them, and the HVAC redone, repainted, refurnished.
The '26, '27?
Very early '27 is what we're looking at. We don't have an absolute final date yet, because we haven't bid that piece of it.
Okay.
Is there a reason why we got rid of work release?
Yeah, nobody used it.
No, but none of the, none of the inmates?
We, on, eh, well, work release wasn't up to the inmates.
I'm sure all the inmates would take work release in a heartbeat.
So it was, it was supposed to have 72. That's what the judges asked for during county executive order term. And he established it as that. Our average the last four years was between 5 and 9. We never had more than 11, and that was usually just once or twice a year if we had it. Many times, we had virtually nobody.
Because judges weren't sentencing that?
They weren't sentencing that. And the people they were sentencing, it, it, I'll give you some of the examples sometime, of what we were getting. But the problem is, every time those people come in, it's a threat, and Dan would have to go through all the security measures as to what they were carrying. We were finding they were creating holes throughout the area and hiding contraband, to say the least. And so we told the judges.
Fair enough.
So all of these things that they've talked about are going to come, whatever solutions that administration's putting forward, that's going to come back to us in November with our budget. So if there's things that you want to bring up for changes, that you want to make part of that, that's all going to be a part of the '26 budget, that's going to come to us the first week of November. And that's our time to weigh in on what do we want to do, where do we want to move? If you're going to find the money, we have to go find the money out of that budget when we get it at the beginning of November, and that's when our time starts.
I appreciate that. Since we have a few minutes, two minutes, can we ask Mr. Reagan to come up here and see if there's any other key points that we might have missed out on? Or is that with the pleasure of the council, with the?
Come on up. I do want to just remind, though, and ask, I guess, you are setting up a time to go through negotiation with administration, correct?
Yes, we will.
Okay, before the 15th?
Before the 15th.
Okay.
Okay, first of all, everyone has said, oh, you need to do formal meetings. We get that. I've come and I've talked to Director Keen several years, informally. In fact, after, several months ago, after he gave his presentation, we talked outside. We discussed some of these issues, okay? We do that almost every year. We have a talk about something or other. Also, I'll send in budget requests to Joanne every year during budget season. I've also come to you four years in a row, right here, and addressed some of these issues. And like I pointed out, at the August 11th meeting, it's progressively gotten worse. You've lost more and more people. And again, I was going by the numbers that you have put in your budget regarding what your budgeted numbers were for corrections officers and what your actual numbers were. And you're about 40 down. That doesn't even count the CPOs, which I think are pretty short, too. Mr. Hollander, I agree with you. It's not going to be one, one issue is going to solve all these problems. It's not. It's going to be a bunch of little ones, and you're going to have to do something that's going to attract. I've said this several years in a row. You got to do something to attract people in. And again, it's not going to be one cure-all, it's not going to happen. You're going to have to have something to make this the best corrections unit possible to draw people here. Could it be, you raise the pay? You do something to give them overtime, when, like, maybe take them off the 28-day cycle, make them general employees. If you're not going to consider them law enforcement, get them off the 28-day law enforcement cycle. Make them a general employee. Because that way, if they need to take a day off, Joe, like you had said, for a sick kid, well, now they got to burn 12 hours of some form of leave, and yet if they worked three mandated or volunteer overtime during that 28-day cycle, they just lost that overtime. So you just had them work 16 hours, three days, and you didn't pay them overtime. Because again, you're following the letter of the law, probably. You're probably following FLSA. But are you treating your people right? No, no, you are not. If they're working a 16-hour day, give them the overtime. And all those things that you had up there about what you might do, what you're considering, those are great. We suggested those for several years now. The educational incentives, the differential pay. We've tossed those out years and years and years in a row, and they've gone nowhere. Now you're considering them, that's great, but there's other things you can do.
Mr. Reagan, I don't mean to cut you off, but we've got about a minute, and we got to change over and bring everybody in, start the meeting at 7:00. We appreciate you being here. So obviously, this is going to be an ongoing conversation. I appreciate you starting with them before coming to us, and then we'll be back involved in this conversation in November.
Okay, and just the last thing, Mr. Chairman. I did want you guys to all see the problems that they're bringing to us. That's why they came up. We were not asking for back and forth the last time we were here. You, some of you guys asked us questions. I just wanted you to see it on their faces, hear it in their voices, what they're going through.
I appreciate that.
Okay? Appreciate your time.
Thank you. We'll take a break, and then we'll get started here in just over a minute for our other meeting, and let everybody else in. There you go. Is this yours? And our. Pastor Flores, see outside?
Good, good, you know?
So if you want to speak during the meeting, you need to grab a comment card, fill that out, and leave it with the ladies up front, and then during public comment, they will, they will call you up. Thanks, Isaac. Appreciate you, Matt. Let's see if we can. Hey, Matt? Can you get everybody in, please? 7 o'clock, we need to. These are the guys I really wanted in. Lori?
I'll start.
Are you sure? Okay. Oh, here she comes. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, September 8th, St. Charles County Council meeting. We will start with our invocation from Pastor Isaac Flores, the chaplain, chaplain of our police department, and pledge of allegiance being led by Councilman Matt Swanson. If you please stand and remove your cap.
Amen, let's pray. God, we thank you, Lord God, just for your love, your grace, your mercy, for this time to be in this meeting tonight. God, I pray for the council members. God, give them wisdom, discernment, clarity tonight, Lord God. I pray for your hand to protect me upon our county and our cities, Lord God. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
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 A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated, call the roll.
Councilman Swanson.
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel. Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Elam.
Here.
Councilman Hollander.
Here.
Councilwoman York. Councilman Baker.
Here.
We are going to start off tonight with our friends from the 505 Foundation, who have a special presentation. Chief, is that you leading this off?
Thanks, especially, I appreciate the council letting us do this on agenda. The 505 Foundation, obviously, is very near and dear to our heart, because they support us in our training endeavors. Steve, Kevin, and Allison in the back, they're, the Bush family, as you know, they've been here before. Obviously, recently, we renamed the firearms training center, the Sergeant John C. Bush Firearms Training Center, after their dad is the legacy he left for his, his vigilance towards training and the importance he put on it. So every year, they have a, this is the fifth year they've had a golf tournament to benefit the 505 Foundation, which in turn buys training equipment, training aids for us. So this year, they raised $21,720, bringing the five-year total to $51,720 worth of training equipment we've been able to provide our officers. This year, to give specifics, we were able to purchase ballistic portable bullet traps that go into live-fire shoot house. They're movable. It saves wear and tear on the, the shoot house, and allows them to do more dynamic training, instead of just having targets attached to the, to the walls. So that's going to be a great benefit. Rifle suppressors for the St. Charles County Regional SWAT team increases officer safety by protecting their hearing, improving communication, reducing muzzle flash, and enhancing control and accuracy. So these, this equipment is stuff we didn't have to budget, thanks to the goodwill of the 505 Foundation. So we appreciate the support.
First of all, thank you again for having us again this year. This, as Chief Fritz said, this is our fifth year. I do want to recognize my brother, Kevin, drove in from Nashville, Tennessee, today to, to be here with us. Also, my siblings are on the phone, John from Virginia, and our sister from Texas, they're also joining us. And this year, the only reason I want to say amen is, we had a phenomenal year this year. We picked up a donor out of Jacksonville, Florida, called First Coast. We picked up a donor out of Jacksonville, Florida called First Coast Security. The owner, Blan, Blanton, and two of his assistants, A.J. and Kyle, they came in and donated over fifteen thousand dollars this year to our cause. And so I wanted to recognize them as well. Because over this five years, even though the chief was graceful about the fifty-one thousand, that's what we raised this year, was fifty-one thousand dollars. Over total for the five years, we have donated fifty-one thousand dollars to the St. Charles County Police Department. And tonight, because of your support, Joanne, I can't thank you enough for everything you do for us. And also, not only have we got the great donor for this year, but then you guys followed up with the range dedication. And you just made this a phenomenal year for the Bush family, and we can't thank you all enough. And thank you very, very much for having us, and we hope we'll be invited back next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Get a picture?
You guys want to slide over?
We will have the sign up at the range.
Nice.
Sign goes up at the range in the building. There will be a commemorative plaque explaining her father's legacy. And yeah, I believe it was John's suggestion, family's suggestion, on the side of it will also be a plaque of each officer's life.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. We appreciate the Bush family and all you guys do for our officers.
Thank you very much.
It's okay. We'll make more. So with that, we will move on to public comment. So on public comment, generally speaking, we limit our speakers to six on a topic. Three for, three against. Each speaker gets three minutes, and that will do the countdown on the clock in front of Mr. Swanson. So our first speaker tonight is?
Jeff Simmons. Oh, okay. Raymond Schulte.
Raymond, I'm expecting a good report. You have. We're going to get you elected before long.
I just want to take and thank the council for the ordinance, fifty-four twenty-one. It's coming up for discussion tonight. And I'm sure that the Chief of Police and his officers attest to the massive traffic jam that occurred out there on Saturday, especially on Saturday, and the multitude of cars that they had to turn away. And how the parking would have been on our streets, we probably would have been double parks instead of just single parks on each side. So yeah, just appreciate the effort that's going through to take and get this zoning district done. And the people out there really appreciate it, I'm sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Arnie Deanov.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanov, county public advocate. First issue I want to talk about is the General Assembly Special Session that went into effect today. Number one, number one issue is congressional map redraw.
Hey, Arnie?
Yes?
Can we stick to county topics, please, and not, we have nothing to do with?
I understand, but it's my prerogative to let the community know.
But it is your priority to speak on county topics. So you've got three minutes. Let's speak on county.
I don't think you can limit me about topics because it affects our county with a congressional district, with St. Charles County and a redrawing of a map.
Arnie, we don't have any power over that.
I understand, but I'd like to make it a matter of the public record.
Let's just roll. You've got three minutes. I'm holding you up. Let's go.
I don't think you can limit my, uh...
Let's just roll. You're on.
Can I have my three minutes back, please?
You're going. You got it.
So the first one is congressional maps. We do not take directives from Washington, D.C. The next issue is initiative petition. We, as the people, retain control over the General Assembly. And so I would ask that anybody out there, contact your state representatives. We have twelve of them in St. Charles County and our two state senators. I appeared last, or a few weeks ago, at the last Board of Alderweireld meeting in Wentzville about coming together with teamwork for roadwork improvements between unincorporated county and city of Wentzville jurisdiction. Piney Road and North Point Prairie Road are out of control. They're roads that are falling apart on the side of the roadways. They have potholes everywhere. I asked the administration to kindly fix a pothole. They only went out and fixed one pothole, and within two feet were another four or five potholes. There's a lot of potholes developing. I got confirmation from the mayor, Mayor Guccione, that the potholes were fixed on Piney Road and North Point Prairie. Now it's the county's responsibility to step up and make that a prime example, like we take care of gold, golden roads in unincorporated county. But for some reason, these roads are the wicked stepchild of Wentzville, and the county forgets about their obligation to bring those roads up to snuff and get rid of the potholes and the traffic nightmares with maintenance to people's vehicles. And this is fair warning, county roads and highways. If you don't fix the potholes, I'm going to start telling residents to make claims against the county to pay for their maintenance issues of tie rods and pop tires. The next issue is appointments for donors. It seems like Mr. Elman wants to appoint people who's the biggest contributors to county boards and commissions, and I think that that principle needs to stop here. Highways and amendment with Horner and Chifrin for stormwater improvements. We really need those stormwater improvements, but why are we not doing it in-house rather than spending another twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars? Bill number fifty-four thirteen, placing a tax credit measure on the April seventh ballot. I'm all for that for limiting taxes and freezing our taxes. There's a election results of the abolishment of the Wentzville Two Transportation Development District. You hardly hear of taxing political entities being dissolved. This is the second one in a year in Wentzville, and I think we need to keep on that track because residents are paying for corporate capital improvement developments, which is really unfair. And the final issue, which I have some concern on, is a variance request for twenty-nine thirty-four Missouri Highway ninety-four South. It's involving a council member before the board of zoning adjustment by Councilman Brazel. And I think that we need to make sure this is done fair and properly. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Heather Carnes, regarding bill number fifty-four fifteen.
Good evening. I'm one of the residents opposed to the rezoning of twenty-six thirty-four Strive. My opposition letter was submitted to planning and zoning and should be included in the bill. I also emailed each of you this past weekend with more information. Mr. Hollander, yours was sent back as undeliverable, so...
I got it.
You did get it? Okay. And thank you, Mr. Swanson, for your reply. I grew up on the north side of O'Fallon. My parents still live in that house on Larkspur Lane, a dead-end street that stopped at open fields and trees all the way to Cool Springs Road. Those fields and trees were replaced by single-family homes, villas, a church, boat and RV storage, the Ozzie Smith Sports Complex, CarShield Field, and much more. So I get it. Development happens. But it doesn't have to happen on every piece of land in the county. I built my house in the southern part of the county to get away from the crowding and overdevelopment. I chose to build where it felt secluded and a little bit country. There must be a place for those of us who want to take our walks down a quiet street surrounded by trees where you'll come across deer grazing in the field. Forest Drive, Oak Drive, and Circle Drive have large lots. Most are three-plus acres with some even five to ten-plus acres, all with one house. And that's what we want for twenty-six thirty-fourth. If the rezoning is approved, this builder, Rouse Homes, is going to build seven homes on three-point-one-eight acres. Zoning to the north, south, and east remains agricultural, while to the west is single-family residential and where most of the newer development has taken place with subdivisions built along Summers Road, including one by this builder, Creekside at Summers. Creekside is one-point-one miles from twenty-six thirty-fourth. Only ten homes are built with their display and one other having some type of brick facade or veneer. All the others are one-hundred percent vinyl exteriors. This does not fit with other homes being built on Forest Drive or Oak Drive. And please don't rely on any previous traffic study that may have been done for Tall Tree. That was possibly done while school was not in session and is already outdated. We have no designated left-hand turn for Forest off of Highway DD. Fox Haven's designated left-turn lane starts at Forest Drive. Sometimes we can't even turn onto DD from Forest due to traffic. Increased traffic is always an issue. We've already had one car come off Highway DD into our ditch. If there are plans to widen DD to accommodate extra traffic, cars will be traveling even closer to our homes, and the next one could come through our fence and into our backyards. Please take into consideration our valid concerns for water runoff, sewer issues, environmental impacts, traffic, and home values. I know there is more opposition than what you'll hear tonight, and I wish more would speak up. But some of us are here, and I would be very grateful if you voted no to the proposed rezoning. And I'll close with this. A couple of years ago, on my walk, I took a picture of the sunset. Last week, I stopped in the same place, and instead of the sunset, all I got was rooftops. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia L., regarding bill number fifty-four fifteen.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Lopain, and I'm here opposing from agricultural to residential on RZ two-five-ten, the bill five-four-one-five. Five years ago, my husband had just retired after thirty years with the Missouri State Highway Patrol, and I was on the brink of retirement. We decided to look for a new home, and we decided on O'Fallon. We loved our house right away, but more importantly, we loved the area it was in. It was still very rural. However, six months after we moved in, that changed, and it changed very rapidly. Trees were being cut down, and subdivisions were popping up near forty-sixty-four and on Summers Road, and the population has more than tripled in the five years we've lived there. But unfortunately, the infrastructure has remained relatively the same. But there is one area that is still rural, untouched, Walden Springs Garden subdivision. A subdivision that contains more than fifty-five homes, a subdivision that has a median-sized lots of two-and-a-half acres, a subdivision where one house sits on one lot. But now that formula is being challenged with seven homes and only three-point-one-eight acres at twenty-six thirty-fourth Strive. Seven homes that would require the homeowners to access the property from Highway DD, a highway where traffic flow has steadily increased, a highway where people do not stop when you are turning right on Forest Drive. Instead, they use the left-hand turn lane into Fox Haven as a straightaway to go around you instead of slowing down. A highway that also does not have a left-hand turn lane onto Forest Drive. And if you're thinking about turning left, you better pray no one ends you because cars do not brake on Highway DD. Every home that sits within the Walden Springs Garden subdivision is unique. But what they aren't is a cookie cutter home. Off the Summers Road, off of Summers Road, there is a new subdivision called Creekside. The builder of that subdivision is the same builder who wants to build seven homes on the lot at twenty-six thirty-fourth Strive. If those homes, those homes are what I consider cookie cutter. And the landscaping at the front of that subdivision is less than appealing. A quarter of the trees planted along the common ground are dead or dying, and the grass is full of weeds. Is this what we are to expect at twenty-six thirty-fourth Strive? If the council approves this project, I only hope it's for one home. If not, then I feel the builder should be mandated to pay for infrastructure improvements, an upgraded sewer system, and street maintenance. And instead of having the entrance off of Forest Drive, the entrance should be off Highway DD like Oakhurst and Fox Haven subdivisions. They have their own designated turn lanes. Forest Drive is an older street with obvious erosion issues, and now the builder wants to add to that erosion with seven more homes. Oh, good. Okay. In conclusion, I only ask the council to put themselves in the position of the people that live near or in Walden Springs Garden subdivision. Some of you may live on two, three, four-acre lots. Imagine you're enjoying your morning coffee on your park-like setting, on your back deck. You hear the birds. You might even see a deer. But the next thing you hear is a chainsaw as the trees next to your property are being cut down, then a concrete truck, a dump truck, the constant sound of a hammer, and then sound of seven lawnmowers. Your oasis is gone, and you can't get it back. I thank you so much for your time and consideration, and I thank you too, Mr. Swanson.
Elizabeth Drury, regarding bill number fifty-four sixteen.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much. I am here to, on behalf of myself, my neighbors, and my family, to oppose the dividing of the property at four-thirty-three Snipes Drive. The current owners do not actually live on the property. The house has been for sale for ten months at this point. They are wanting to separate a three-acre lot into point-six acres and then keep the house on the other. This will change the entire dynamic and landscape of this neighborhood. Most of the homes are on one-to-three-acre lots. As a neighborhood, we bought here, built here because of the land, because it looks different from every other neighborhood in St. Charles County, and we would like to keep it that way. Also, if this goes through, it's just allowing division and sets a precedent for other neighbors to separate their land. I know it's only seven thousand square feet. Technically, they could build five homes on that very small piece of property. But that's not what this neighborhood was originally intended for. I would also like to thank Mr. Baker for actually driving through our neighborhood and seeing the community we have and why it is so special where we live. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Eric S.
Hello. My name's Eric, and I just want to talk a little bit about St. Charles Corrections and a couple of things to do with that. So you guys went over, like, what would it cost for a four-K raise for everybody, right? Hundred-and-thirty employees, five-hundred-twenty thousand dollars. I don't know why you're spending probably in the vicinity of about five million just by rough guess on a break room that they're never going to use. You know, maybe give that to them for extra pay or something. You've got budgeted employees, and you're about forty people short. Why not give that money to them as a bonus for the end of the year for all the employees who aren't there? I mean, these are just, to me, common sense things, right? That's what I would do if I ran it. Other major corporations, businesses of all sorts, put the supervisors in a position to work if they're shorthanded, right? So you're not apparently doing that for the most part. I mean, that blows my mind. Let's see. Real estate taxes. You guys in 2019 brought in, if I remember correctly, about five-point-seven billion dollars in real estate taxes. Last time I checked was about a year and a half ago. You were at about eleven-point-five billion, if I remember right. That can all give them raises, you know? You also get taxes by sales taxes, which, by my calculation, probably is in about a hundred-and-twenty percent increase since 2019. I mean, there's so many ways you could give these people raises, and then you talk about CPI for everything? I actually had a long, lengthy conversation with CPI people. And the CPI actually uses thirty percent, well, a little bit over, it's one-third, is your calculation for real estate, how it factors in. So in Missouri, the median home price has increased by a hundred percent since 2019, which actually would equal a thirty percent alone CPI increase in your wages. But guess what? You gave maybe ten percent. Another thing is, like, food factors into that, your utilities. Utilities are a hundred percent up roughly. Well, actually, I'd say probably fifty. Fifty to a hundred percent, depending on where you're at. Food's up a lot. Gas is up. I mean, everything is up, up, up. And like, raises just don't go up. Let's see, what else do we got here? Yeah, I guess that's really it. I mean, it just doesn't, a lot of things that we're not doing don't make sense. You can do a lot of things to help people, and it seems like, you know, if it was me working there, not going to lie, I would factor in, like, how much bullcrap do I have to deal with? That's going to affect my pay. If you're starting at fifty thousand dollars for an average job, and mind you, they say the average household needs to earn about two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars a year right now to live comfortably. And we're nowhere near that. So how much bullcrap do I got to work or deal with at work to, you know, get even close to that? Like, I would be charging you, like, I wouldn't accept a job there for under a hundred thousand dollars a year. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
I think this is, is it Officer Brown?
Yes.
Okay, for corrections.
Before you speak, the county doesn't get the money from real estate. That goes to the schools and everybody else, not to the county, all right? Same with personal property.
Well, generally, we don't go back and forth, so we appreciate your comments. Officer Brown.
Good evening, all. My name is Officer Brown. I work for St. Charles Department of Corrections. I've been with them for approximately eleven years. And I was speaking with my colleagues outside, and they mentioned our mandates. And I was speaking with my colleagues, colleagues outside, and they mentioned our mandates. It was watching my attention that the misconception that we volunteer to come in, to, you know, just we want to be there, we want to come in as much as we do, actually, we volunteer to not get mandated. So, it requires us, because the list goes pretty quickly, that it requires us to come in more than we would like to. So, I wanted to definitely address that. Also, I know that you've had meetings before, and unfortunately, we weren't able to attend because of our work schedule. We're coming straight from work. I just literally just got off. And I wanted to bring up the every-two weeks getting paid for our overtime. I do know that in the past, it was probably a little bit more challenging simply because of the fact that you probably had someone inputting in them manually. But now that we've gone over to an electronic system, we're pretty much trying to figure out why can that not be done. And so, those are two of our main concerns that we would like to definitely be addressed at some point. And that is all. All right, thank you.
Rosalind Armstead, regarding Corrections.
I'm Officer Armstead again from Corrections. And to kind of piggyback off what my coworker said, that was one of my two main concerns is that we have, we have to wait an entire month, you know, to get our overtime payout, which means we're now getting hit bigger on taxes because we have to wait once a month to get our overtime. So, we're getting, you know, hit, or our taxes, you know, are going to be larger because we're having to wait instead of every two weeks. And I was, I've been there since 2007, so I've been there eighteen years. And so, I was there when we were getting paid every two weeks. So, I know it can be done because it was done that way when I was there. We got our checks paid every two weeks, and from my understanding, so our medical department still does, our police department does. So, other people in the county are getting their overtime every two weeks, but we don't. Another one of my main concerns is that we get, we earn PTO, and we're able to take PTO, but then they penalize us when we take PTO because we get paid straight time for, when we work overtime. So, when I, again, when I started in 2007, the only time we got penalized is if it was unscheduled. So, if we called in sick, which is understandable, so if we called in sick, then we would only get paid straight time when we worked overtime. But now, even if I say, hey, I'm going to take a cruise in December, well, I take that cruise in December, and I worked overtime so I could take said cruise, but now I'm going to get hit because I'm only getting paid straight time for taking time off that I earned. And so, I don't understand why we're getting penalized for taking time off that we, that we clearly are getting paid to do, and we're, you know, taking our time off to enjoy with our families, but yet we come back and we work overtime, and they say, oh, because you took these days off, you only get straight, straight time for it. So, those are two of my biggest concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Simmons.
Good evening. Jeff Simmons with Bax Engineering. I actually have several items to talk about, so I am going to try and make it very quick. The first is on the consent agenda. It is regarding the vacation of the alley and Forest Street in Defiance. The legal descriptions for the properties did include the alley, though we found no evidence that that alley was actually vacated at any time formally by the county. So, we're requesting that alley be vacated. It's basically part of each property. Forest Street essentially serves as a driveway between two parcels, and we are also asking to vacate that. This is, this is in relation to another item on the agenda regarding the variance for septic on Highway 94. The next item is Bill Number 5416, the re-subdivision of Lot 47 of Woodcliff Estates. Quite simply, this, these are two-plus acre lots. Most, several of the lots have been subdivided into one acre, but the zoning is R1E, and R1E is 7,000 square foot. The subdivision that we're proposing does meet all of the requirements of the R1E zoning. So, I'll just leave it at that. And I'll be happy to come up during the bills if anybody has any questions regarding any of these items. Next one is 5417, the conditional use for the auto dealership. This will consist of seven bays and a wash area. This will be behind the building against MasterCard, so it won't be visible to really anybody but the parking lots in MasterCard. It will meet, or it will match the existing building. It'll just be an expansion that's much needed for this car lot. 5418, this is regards to the variance requested. So, in Defiance, there are several lots that are under an acre. The eight, one acre is the minimum per county code for septic. Unfortunately, these lots were plotted in 1908 before zoning in the area existed and before that minimum square footage for the septic was in place. It just happens that these two lots are owned by the same individual. Part of the reason that we're looking at the vacations that are on the other item agenda is to make these lots as big as we possibly can. We're bound by another neighbor to the east, we're bound by Highway 94, we're bound by the Katy Trail, and we're bound by landscaping. And the landscaping business, to make this one lot, it would take about, I believe it was two-thirds of that area to make this big enough. The septic can be designed to work, can be designed to work safely, can be designed outside of the floodplain, and we're going to, planning on putting it in the front yard. I'd be happy to answer any more questions when the bill comes up for consideration.
Thank you.
Joe Brazel, regarding an agenda item and Bill Number 5418.
Hi, I'm Joe Brazel. Nice to meet you guys. Okay. The variances on the alleys, we've, we've granted about almost every variance in Defiance because they have alleys behind, there were the Parsons Development in 1908, so these lots were all drawn with alleys in the back and alleys between the houses for services. And most of them have been vacated. Nick Allison-Boss, we just passed theirs about a year ago. They vacated their alley. So, some of my neighbors have already done this years ago. So, it's got an alley running behind the house and one between my two neighbors. So, all three neighbors agree, they signed, they're very much in favor of it. That's the vacation. And then, what the Bax Engineering gentleman was saying is, every, most every lot down in Defiance is about a quarter acre. And so, I've bought three houses, four houses down there so far. Two of them, and every one, we redesigned the septic tank, put a new septic tank in. We make them look nice. One's called the Vino Villa Cabin A Cabin. They're for, they're VRBOs for guests, for weddings and stuff like that. So, I have two more, those two are completed, had the septic tanks installed, everything fine on several similar lots, same-sized lots. So, this house I bought is a farmhouse. If you look at it, it's kind of hard to understand. It's two lots, plotted in 1908, so we already just put the septic tank in the old house. We're remodeling that, making it look really nice. These houses look horrible, so we're making them look really pretty and really a lot of nice colors and stuff. So, the lot next to it is already a lot that was plotted in 1908. So, what I'm asking for is to build a house on that lot, and we already engineered septic tanks, we just got, they went next door in the very same-sized lot. And so, since our ordinances are, me and Roberts talked about this before, it makes it very difficult when you live in Defiance to do anything because of the way it is, it was plotted in the early 1900s, and so, you shouldn't penalize people for trying to fix up the community because of ordinances that need to be changed, which will eventually, we're going to look at all that, but I couldn't change it. I didn't realize it until I have to go through this process because it's the process that we offer. So, that's why we had to get variances and stuff like that. So, is there any questions or anything? All right, thank you.
Final speaker.
Awesome. So, that'll wrap up public comments. We're up to oral report from the county executive.
The only thing I want to say, Mr. Chairman, is since, since I live on a quarter-acre lot, I'm glad to hear Mr. Brazel now likes a quarter-acre lot. Thanks a lot, Joe. That's all I have. I'll have a comment on the, the tax rates when we get to that bill.
Okay. That'll get us to the consent agenda. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda is passed. So, with that, Mr. Brazel, I think you can join us again for the time being while we go through bills for final passage, starting with Bill Number 5409.
Bill Number 5409, an ordinance approving a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation for the Hepperman Road Phase Two project.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill Number 5409, an ordinance approving a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation for the Hepperman Road Phase Two project. Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Bill Number 5409 passes. Hey, just a quick note, guys, can you make sure that you're speaking into the mics and for administration as well? I know those mics can be challenging from time to time, so let's please make sure everybody at home can hear. That gives us up to 5410.
Bill Number 5410, an ordinance approving a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation for the Duello Road Phase Two project.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill Number 5410, an ordinance approving a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation for the Duello Road Phase Two project. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bill Number 5410 has passed. Bill 5411.
Bill Number 5411, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Federal Bureau of Investigation for a multi-jurisdictional response to improvised explosive devices between the Federal Bureau of Investigation and St. Charles County on behalf of its police department.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill Number 5411, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Federal Bureau of Investigation for a multi-jurisdictional response to improvised explosive devices between the Federal Bureau of Investigation and St. Charles County on behalf of its police department. Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Bill Number 5411 passes. That gets us to 5412.
Bill Number 5412, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for women, infants, and children local agency nutrition services program.
Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill Number 5412, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for women, infants, and children local agency nutrition services program. Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Bill Number 5412 passes. That gets us to Bill 5413.
Bill Number 5413, an ordinance placing on the ballot of the Tuesday, April 7, 2026, general municipal election, providing for the authorization of a tax credit program whereby the real property tax liability on an eligible taxpayer's homestead shall not be increased above the liability incurred during the initial credit year established by law.
Executive Elman, you had to comment on this.
Yeah, I just want to let you know on Thursday or Friday, we got a response from the Office of Administration lawyer that doesn't agree with our lawyer that this is not funded, we think that we're...
Can you make sure that mic is on?
We're in trust.
Better start over.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that last Thursday or Friday, we got a letter from the attorney from the Office of Administration, who apparently disagrees with our attorney and that this is an unfunded mandate, you know, that, that they should pay for us putting it on the ballot. We are preparing a response to that to try to convince them that in fact it should, but as I suggested last week, I'm sure we would want to go, go through with this even if we do end up paying for it, so.
But this is about $150,000 in cost.
It's about $150,000 cost, and their, and their argument is that, well, we have, we have to do this for everybody else, but the fact is, we don't have anything else on the ballot. So, it is an additional cost for us, and we're going to try to make that clear to them, and we'll keep you up to date on it.
Okay. Any other comments about this bill? Seeing none, we'll move on to calling the roll.
Bill Number 5413, an ordinance placing on the ballot of the Tuesday, April 7, 2026, general municipal election, providing for the authorization of a tax credit program whereby the real property tax liability on an eligible taxpayer's homestead shall not be increased above the liability incurred during the initial credit year established by law. Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Bill Number 5413 passes, so that will show up on your bill unless the courts change their mind on April 7. Bill 5414.
Bill Number 5414, an ordinance amending the Personnel Administration Program Section 115.710, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, to include a title change related to a position in family court services.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill Number 5414, an ordinance amending the Personnel Administration Program Section 115.710, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, to include a title change related to a position in family court services. Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Bill Number 5414 passes. That wraps up bills for final passage and moves us to bills for introduction, starting with 5415.
Bill Number 5415, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to R1E, single-family residential district per application, RZ 25-10.
Mr. Brazel?
Yes, Robert, Robert is, Robert here.
Can you make sure your mic's on?
Oh, is it? Is it on? Yeah.
Okay, there we go.
Robert, so in this subdivision, I understand that all the lots are two, two, three acres and that's and so forth, the 54 homes that they mentioned, is that correct?
Is this, we're talking about the one, Forest Drive, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so Walden Springs Gardens was plotted in the 1950s, even before zoning came along or subdivision regulations, and the lot size existing is, yeah, two to three acres. There's an exception, though. Over the years, parts of Walden Springs Gardens has re-subdivided. So, for instance, across the street from this property, Forest Manor Court, that was annexed in the city of O'Fallon. It's now seven lots, and they want to do the exact same thing basically across the street in this case. They want to do seven lots, but a little bit larger detention basin. Otherwise, it'd be a mirror image of the subdivision existing across the street.
Is it, is it contiguous with O'Fallon?
Yeah, it's right across the street.
No, the Frost, the one they're trying to develop the seven homes on, is it, is it annexable by O'Fallon?
Yes, because of Forest Manor Court right across the street is in O'Fallon, that subdivision, Forest Manor Estates, I think it's called.
I mean, I'm curious, why didn't they go to O'Fallon?
I'm not sure. They, they've stated that they want to develop in the county, and they stated that's their intention.
Any other questions? Thank you, Robert. That gets us to Bill 5416.
Bill number 5416, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Tim Baker, an ordinance of the County of St. Charles, Missouri, approving the preliminary plat for the re-subdivision of Lot 47, Woodcliff Estates, Plat 6.
Any questions about this one? Mr. Swanson?
I just want to make a quick comment because I saw some expressions. These are just bills for introductions, so we're not voting on them tonight. That'll be at the next meeting when we vote on it.
I know, I did the correction problems, though.
Okay.
It's only six lines, not seven. Yeah, in Forest Manor, right.
That would explain the expression of what was going on. All right, just wanted you to understand the process.
Right, yeah, to understand, we just would like, it's been a long time.
It's all good. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, so, this lot that they're wanting to do is .8 acres. This, there is not a lot in this subdivision that's that small, and I'm young enough to remember, uh, more, younger than most of you, Sesame Street, one of these things is not like the other. That's what this lot is. It would be a shame to approve this, so, that's my comment.
Mr. Brazel, did you have something?
No, no, this is similar to the next, the first one we just looked at. I mean, the same thing, but, yeah.
It's all good. Did you have this one? No. I, I'm sorry, it seems like you had every other one, so I got confused and, so that'll bring us to bill 5417.
Bill number 5417, requested by Mike Hurlbert, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance amending ordinance number 19-095, granting conditional use permit, CUR 19-05B, for automobile and truck sales to Benson Automotive Properties LLC, property owner.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, we'll go to 5418.
Bill number 5418, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance affirming the Board of Zoning Adjustments' decision on application, VAR 25-01A.
Mr. Brazel, did you want to recuse yourself on this one in discussion? I think we kind of have to, uh, just to make sure this is Mr. Brazel's lot, so that's why he's not up here and that's why he's not talking about this. Any questions or comments about this particular bill? So I made you get steps for absolutely nothing. There you go. So that brings us to, uh, 5419.
Bill number 5419, requested by Chief Kurt Friss, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a memorandum of, of understanding between the County of St. Charles on behalf of the Police Department and the Federal Bureau of Investigation, St. Louis Division for Participation and the St. Louis Cyber Task Force.
Any questions or comments about this bill?
Sounds like a good idea.
There you go. Uh, our cyber task force, by the way, is one of the best in the country. Our folks continue to just overperform and outpunch their weight.
You hope for a second? I said a second, Dan.
Sorry, it's all good, I appreciate that. Uh, that'll move us up to, uh, bill 5420.
Bill number 5420, requested by Joe Brazel and Tim Baker and sponsored by Joe Brazel and Tim Baker, an ordinance amending a new chapter, 180, of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, addressing community improvement districts.
Any questions or comments about this? Do you want to address this one?
I can if you want to, yeah.
I'm just curious, like, where'd this come from and what's it about?
Okay, so we have some developers in St. Charles County who want to try to do bigger and better things.
They want to do bigger and better things with lot sizes, with the lakes, with trails, things like that, and so in order for them to do that, to try to share costs, it's kind of, it's a CID, Community Improvement District. So whoever goes into the subdivision, they can defer the cost, whether it's 2 million or 3 million, whatever those numbers are, to build these big lakes and have big lots and have trails and have green space. They can defer it for, I think, uh, 27 years. I think we wrote it at 20, but I think it's supposed to be 27 years, so that we might have to make some changes, but, so it's going to be based on, uh, the size of your house, size of your lot, and it's, it's, it's developer's choice. They don't have to do it, they can choose to do it, and then they have to sell it to their customer that you're going to pay $500 a year. They've got the cost breakdown, they showed it to me, and it's very reasonable, so if I were to move into that subdivision with my house is 300 or 400, 500,000, or you go to a 750 house or whatever, they'll have different steps, that you pay appropriately to the, to the cost of your house, and then you get the amenities. And, and it gets paid for only by the people who live there into this fund, and then once it's paid off, they're done. And so it's trying to care, cost share with the developer, is what it is. And if you guys want to, um, they could, someone could come in and explain it better whose, uh, they, I think it's a great idea, actually. Gives us better subdivisions in our county with a choice. The developer has a choice to do it, you don't have to do it. And the buyer has a choice to buy in there, so we're not telling anybody what they got to do or if they're going to do it, it's just a choice.
Okay. Mr. Swanson?
Isn't a CID already allowed?
Not in this fashion, from when I was on the-
Mr. Elman?
Yeah, that was going to be my, my question, too. Is there anything, anything that's in this bill that isn't already in the state statute, I guess?
Kind of what I was wondering.
Because I couldn't, it looked to me like it was just a repeat of what's in the state statute.
Well, Steve, I, I don't know, I explained to staff what I was looking for, when I needed, and, um, so I'm not a lawyer-
You know, if you want to repeat it and put it in our, a charter, just so people know it's there, that's fine, but I don't think we're really expanding what can or can't be done, and ultimately, it's at your discretion. These things come in and people try to sell it to you, and if you think it's a good idea, you vote for it. If you think it's a good idea, you vote against it.
But that's just it, what we're trying to say is, if, if, if a developer, when they submit it, when the engineer, whatever, submits it, he submits it as a CID. It doesn't have to go through the process for the county council, it's their choice. The problem is, is they'd spend all this money on developing it with these trails and lakes and everything with the hopes that we're going to give them a CID individually and specifically, but what this ordinance does is allows them to come in with the development plan that that's what they want to do. That's what, they don't have to come before the council, it's already accepted with that plan. And so I, if I'm explaining that wrong, then I've misunderstood it, but if there's further conversation needed, we can have them, but that's the way I understand what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, the attorneys look at it, my understanding is, is, uh, you know, you can't give it, give it to them automatically, uh, they still have to come in and, and sell it, that it's in the public interest to do this.
No, no, it would be part of the, when they submit for their zoning change, like, there's a couple subductions-
Yeah, they can submit a zoning request or whatever, and they can also submit this-
With the CID that fits within our county rules.
And you all would be able to, uh, grant them both or deny them both or do one and not the other. Uh, and like I said, the, the only, the only benefit I see from this, if you want to put it in there so people that read our ordinances know that this is something they can do, but it's in the state statute, they can do it now, and I think the last one that we, last time we talked about this was several years ago when Wentzville did a CID and they, you know, and they used half of it to pay for their, uh, their community center.
Okay.
Remember that discussion?
Well, well, this, this one is just for subdivisions, and it's specifics on trails, lakes, green space, larger lots, things like that, and I think we can have further conversation on it, but it's to be understood that it's not paying for our community centers or any of that stuff specifically on the subdivision and those people.
No, it'll pay for those things that you, that you're saying they're going to do.
Yeah, right, and so we don't have any-
I don't have, I don't have a problem with what's in the statute. I just, I just don't know if it's necessary to put it in our charter or, excuse me, our ordinances, but if we put it in there, it won't, it won't really, it's fine, so it's up to you all.
Here's the thing, Steve, too, though, what I, I think I'm correct on this, is Wentzville, O'Fallon, all these communities, they offer it automatically, these CID's, but we don't. And so I'm trying, I could be wrong, but I don't think-
I don't think they do, but I'll, I'll check on that.
Yeah.
We'll check on that.
Where it's automatic, me and Mike talked about this, I talked to do with Robert, and and they, it's not that this, they didn't, no one said this, no, you don't need this, I mean, that's, that's why I did it.
Mr. Fox? Yeah, so, coming from municipal level, honestly, CID's and NID's, Neighborhood Improvement Districts, I don't like them at all. I really don't, because what you're doing is the developer is pushing the cost onto the home buyers. A lot of times it's hidden that they don't know that they're going to have this extra assessment on them for X number of years. So like just today, we got rid of an extra taxing district on Wentzville Parkway. That was something a lot of people don't realize, that when you shop on Wentzville Parkway, each little section has different tax amounts, depending on what side of your road on and when the TDD goes away. So with a CID or an NID, I'm not in favor of it, because it's a way for the developers, yes, to do all these fancy things, but who's paying for it in the end? Not the developer, but the homeowner. And a lot of times, the realtors will not tell them it's there, or they phase it in a way that you don't realize it's there, and for how long. So, census is already part of state statute, I don't know if it's needed, if we could get more information about that, that would be great. Uh, I think the tool's already in the toolbox, I don't know why we need to duplicate it.
I think all you guys are having good, good questions. I think that Matt is right, that, that any ordinance, do, do we have to say that it has to be specified, that the homeowner, the purchaser has to know that it's going on? And I'll get, I will be one-
Well, I think they do by the, the laws of the realtors, they have to say it.
It has to be disclosed, I believe.
But when you get a packet that's this big, sometimes you're so excited by that house, you're not reading or listening to everything being said.
But I would just say that the conversation's good. I, I probably have to get more details, and then we can work, work it through. And maybe it's not a good, good idea, I think it is, I really do. I'm trying to get bigger lots and, and I agree with space and stuff like that.
No, I get that. I was, I was just curious in terms of what was different from this, like Mr. Elman was saying, compared to the CID that we already have. I wasn't seeing anything different, so I was, I was hoping to learn what that was, but it seems like, if I'm hearing you correctly, what this is, is basically just giving blanket approval to CID's for any developer who chooses to use it, they automatically get it, they don't have to come ask us anymore.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir?
It'd be like a HOA assessment.
It'd be like an HOA assessment, yeah.
But, but again, uh, you know, when you do your title search, you find out about the HOA.
Right.
What your assessment is. I think if we ever do do this, you know, we need to make sure that the home buyer has some sort of notice, you know, because they can find out what the taxes were the year before, uh, or, but, but, but they don't know exactly, uh, they may or may not know they're going to have this additional tax.
Well, I think a little different from the HOA fee, that is for maintenance of everything that's already been provided versus infrastructure and everything else. So if you're in an HOA, it's for the pool upkeeps, trails, parks, whatever else, not being the cost of the sewers, streets, lakes, detention pots, it's just the upkeep of it. I think that's the big difference between an HOA fee and then, of course, a NID or SID.
You're asking the right questions.
Any other questions? All right. To be continued. Uh, bill 5421.
Bill number 5421, requested by Patty York and Mike Elam, sponsored by Patty York and Mike Elam, an ordinance establishing a residential permit parking zone for the area bordering the St. Charles Convention Center and surrounding parking lots.
Any questions or comments about this?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge Councilwoman York's effort on this. I know this has been a long process, and I want to acknowledge the residents, and I appreciate you guys. We're us finally getting to a solution that's going to work for everybody, and again, I just want to thank everybody involved, so, that's-
And, if I may-
Go ahead.
And if you see problems, contact us so we can modify it along the way, because I'm sure we didn't think of everything, and we're going to need to make some adjustments.
So I want to echo Mr. Baker, is Councilwoman York has done a really good job in working with the residents, hearing them out, trying to come up with something that works, uh, for everybody. So on Friday, I think we had 23 tickets issued, eight cars got towed, uh, 13 were, uh, 48-hour tow tags were placed on vehicles. So I think we're off to a good start, because I think, uh, and hats off to the Police Department. Uh, I went by Sunday, um, I'd never been to one of these until my wife dragged me on Sunday, so, um, I have mums bigger than people now at my house for some strange reason, but, uh, talked to our officer who was there that day, and he talked about, uh, from Friday, Saturday to Sunday is a world of difference. Like Sunday, there was hardly any issues. It could be because it's a smaller attendance day, but I think what it speaks to is people are getting the message that this is not allowed. You do it once, if your car gets towed, you won't do that again. Uh, that's, deterrence is a, is a really nice thing. So, um, hats off to, uh, Councilwoman York, I think she's done a great job. Thanks to you folks for being patient with us. I know it's been a struggle for the last couple of years of trying to get there, and Raymond will see you next meeting to give us an update on, on what's going on, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. So that'll move us up to, uh, bill 5422.
Bill number 5422, requested by Mike Summers, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the General Revenue Fund and for various special funds of and for the County of St. Charles, Missouri, for the year 2025.
Any questions or comments about this bill?
Could you now put a halt here in this, please?
Mr. Elman?
Yeah, I, my, my only announcement is that, uh, I was hoping that when we did this this year, uh, I was going to suggest, uh, to you, and of course, I would need your approval, uh, to do this, but I was hoping that we could take the money we were going to get from the marijuana tax and give it to Alarm and Dispatch and to Road and Bridge and eliminate our personal property tax entirely. I still think we ought to think about doing that sometime in the future, but, uh, that plan is, uh, is not going to work unless the Supreme Court, uh, changes their mind in the last, next couple of days.
Is, did, is that where it's at now?
Yeah, we filed a motion for reconsideration, I don't think they've ruled on it yet, um, but yeah, I mean, I, I've said all along that, uh, there's, uh, that the homeowners need a, need a tax break a lot more than the marijuana sellers. But it's a shame we're not going to be able to do that.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, that'll wrap up bills for introduction. That gets us to announcements and miscellaneous, which we have a disclaimer that needs to be read that Mr. Swanson alluded to earlier.
Election results, abolishment of the Wentzville II Transportation Development District. Number one, certified copy of the official results of the mail-in election received from the Director of Elections of St. Charles County pursuant to sections 238.215.4 and 238.275, RSMO, and on behalf of the St. Charles County Election Authority, please find the attached certified copy of the election results for the recent mail-in election held regarding abolition of the THF Wentzville II Development LLC, Transportation Development District. A certified copy of these election results has been filed with the County Registrar and spread upon the records of the County Council.
Excellent, thank you very much. So that is now in the record. Uh, any other announcements or miscellaneous that anybody wants to put out there? I do want to go back to, um, we had the gentleman who spoke earlier during public comment, and Councilman Hammond, uh, was trying to help him find his way with that, which I invite everybody, when it comes to, he referenced real estate taxes. I encourage everybody, go find your 2024 real estate tax bill, and it shows you every political subdivision on there that you pay as part of your taxes. The very first line, by the way, says St. Charles County Government Taxes, and for the past few years, that number has been a whopping zero, which is what Councilman Hammond was trying to allude to when the gentleman is saying we collected $11 billion. The county may collect your money, but we don't keep your money. We pay that out to a whole bunch of other, uh, political subdivisions that the voters have approved that money go to, so we collect it, but we don't keep it. So, for the record, I just want to echo Dave's comments of what he was trying to say there and say-
And what about the bonuses? We can't give bonuses, I thought that was brought up, too.
Yeah, we are, we are not allowed to do that, so, um, government funding and, and doing that. Mr. Elman?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just again, going back to the comment period, uh, reading from your, uh, council rules, it says, "The Chair shall have the power to use counsel gavel to silence members of the public who," and then has various things, and one of them is, "Make statements unrelated to St. Charles County Government."
I appreciate that, so-
Now, you know, we've had that a long time, back during the COVID days, when we were the only place open for business, and we had people coming in complaining about everything going on in Washington, Jeff City, here and everything else, we kind of just forgot about We kind of just forgot about that rule. But you are absolutely right, that is in the rule, and you have every, every right to do what you tried to do.
I appreciate that. We had a pub, we had a work session, so that's two and three meetings that we've now done. That's three this year if you count the retreat. Uh, I would like to ask the council members if they would consider, I know Mr. Baker wants us to do one on stormwater, which I would like to do that before the end of the year. I would also like for, since we have three new council members over the past three years, I'd like for us to go back and review the council rules. So I would ask for all of the council members, we can get you a copy of the county council rules. I want to do a work session on reviewing those and, uh, see about possibly doing some updates, uh, on those rules so we can all be clear on what those are. We are supposed to follow Robert's Rules of Order, is one of our, and I know Mr. Swanson, it drives him crazy because he understands Robert's Rules very well. And to be fair, we're pretty lax on how we do Robert's Rules here. So we want to make sure that everybody gets their comments in, we want to make sure that everybody's heard. But I would really like to go back and have everybody review council rules, and that way you get a chance to have some suggestions on what updates we may want to do on those. We haven't done that since, I believe, um, Mr. Cronin was chair, was the last time that we updated council rules. So as the expression goes, it's been a minute. It's probably good to do that. Speaking of a minute...
Hold on, just one last thing. We will have a work session once the master plan has gotten to the next level. Do we know a date of when our next master plan meeting will be for Councilman Baker and Mike?
I know when my next master plan meeting is with, uh, with my staff, which is like a week from Friday, I think. Is there, do we have a date then for the...
I can give you an indication when we, we don't have a date yet.
I didn't think, I haven't seen one. We're close.
Will we have something to bring to the entire council by the end of this calendar year?
We'll have an update.
Yeah, but we're, we talked about that the other day. We're, we're going to wait until after, uh, the, the budget's done before we bring it to you.
Okay, so...
What we're not saying is we agreed, there's five council members who do agree to have a work session prior to the delivery of the master plan to planning zoning. We want to see the rough draft of the maps and have a conversation with the consultants and with the council.
I think we should have a chance to see it before planning zoning does.
What is the, what does our, what does the, the charter say? It goes from the steering committee to, to P and Z?
Mike, can you come up here real quick? That way I'll get an email from somebody that says, "I can't hear." So I appreciate that. There you go.
Um, so yes, so the charter states the, uh, master plan will be recommendation from the steering committee to the county council. So we go to the Planning and Zoning Commission as part of the, the process, but it, it will be a recommendation from steering committee to you all.
But that's the final draft goes to planning zoning, but we have a right to review the, the, in the process, so... Because I haven't been involved in this one minute, and I don't feel that, I don't feel that the people in southwest St. Charles County or Matt's rural areas, or Tim and Patty's rural areas have been represented. There has been nobody from agriculture, nobody from conservation, no environmentalists, no farmers, uh, no people from Citizens for Smart Growth. It's, uh, it's mostly engineers, utility people, developers. And so I feel that the representation has not been fair. However, we would like to see the map delivered at its, at its partial state before it goes to planning zoning, so we don't waste a lot of time. And I'm getting this from Jefferson County, because they did use the same consultant, and they did spend a lot of time revising it after it was delivered to planning zoning. And they did say that we need to get in front of it.
So, um, I can address that. Uh, I actually spoke to Jefferson County today. Um, the council is ready, is, it's at the council level right now. There is one councilman that has some concerns with it. The, according to staff, all the rest of the council are in favor of it. Um, haven't, haven't voiced any concerns or any, any, or issues. There's an interesting dynamic that's being at play. Jefferson County is completely different than St. Charles County. The master planning process that they're undergoing is completely different than master planning process that we're doing here. So the, the, how they address rural issues or urban issues or whatever is completely separate, is nothing like what we're doing. So we do have representation on the steering committee, for all the council districts. We, we have count, um, representatives from different agencies, different, uh, residential districts. Um, so we've tried to make sure that we're, we're, um, crossing all, all the districts' boundaries as part of that representation.
You got John Lampings, the one from your area.
Well, I don't, I'm not, Mike, I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just telling you, I feel that the representation is very shy for the people who live in rural communities, okay? But the, the, the thing with Jefferson County, go back to that, is what I was understanding, that they, after this thing, they set up a committee with the council members to review.
Because the...
Isn't that what you said, Matt?
Well, and this is where, since I haven't gone through this, if planning zoning approves it and brings it to us, how much change can we do to that?
Planning and zoning doesn't approve it.
They're just presented it?
Yeah, it's just presented to planning and zoning as part of the charter process just out of, just out of respect.
So they don't...
The Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't have approving authority.
So no vote, they don't do any vote on it or anything else?
They, they can recommend it if they want, but it's, there's, there's no...
Do they, do they recommend approval?
There's no authority.
Do they recommend approval, don't they, Mike?
No.
So they don't do anything, they just look at it?
County charter is, there's a steering committee, and that's what's different. Every other community I've ever worked in, I've never had a steering committee that, that does the actual work and is the recommending body. Typically, it's planning and zoning commissions, typically. But that's not the case in St. Charles County with the charter.
Well, and five years ago, I sat on this committee with Mike Klinghammer, and we heard, like, you had some areas then, you said, hey, here's where I want to draw this line, and it's three acres from this part past, and we can develop up to this point. And we talked about that in the meeting with the steering committee. So this time, you have Swanson and Baker, who are our representatives from the council. So if you have concerns, specifically you, he and he are your people that you need to be in their ear talking about this, because they are our representatives on this steering committee. So if you want to get ahead of it, they're in the room while these things are happening, and they have a voice to be able to affect the change. And I never know Mr. Swanson to be shy about expressing opinions. Mr. Baker, I don't know, but Mr. Swanson, I know, is, is not shy. So I would encourage, get involved with that and make sure that these guys are understanding what you want done so they can represent it in the room before it gets done.
No, I appreciate that, Mike. I just, I'm a little concerned with the consultants, with their directives were. And, um, I'm concerned with some of the terminology they may use, and so, um, those are some of the concerns. So maybe we don't, I don't know. I think, I think it's worth further investigation, whether or not we need a meeting for that. Like you said, maybe we don't, I don't know. But I was suggesting it because I don't want to get so far down the tunnel that then we got to spend a lot of time trying to make corrections and having a lot of arguing and all this other stuff.
I think it's fair to do updates, but we also have to stick with the process that's lined out in the charter. We can't just do whatever we want to do and not stick in the process that's written in the charter. So if the charter says it goes to planning and zoning before it comes to us...
I would agree with that, but I would also agree that it doesn't say that we can't have interim meetings with the council. It doesn't say that. We can review whatever we want, we're the legislative body of the county. So if we choose, if we choose to have a interim meeting before it gets delivered, then that's what we can do.
Yeah, I mean, we just did a work session on master plan literally a month ago. We did a work session, and all of us had the ability at that work session to bring up any concerns that we had. That's why we did the work session on it.
I think, okay, I'm hearing two different things. I think Joe wants to see more of the, here's the final lines and everything else. The last meeting we had was a more, more of a overview of language, where we're going with everything.
Right.
But I think you guys are both saying the same things. We're just at a different point right now. So I think as soon as Tim and I are in that meeting, we see some maps, see where everything's going, the language is pretty much all done, remember from last time? We're getting close to some of it. That's where we'll be able to give you a better idea of where we're going. I just want to make sure we have that out there, that when we get closer to the final lines, that we do block off enough time. And after talking to the administration the other day, that is set up, we will have a work session to talk about it in more detail versus just approving. Is that correct?
Mr. Elman?
Mr. Chairman, there's a process for how we do the budget, and there's a process for how you do the master plan. And, uh, you know, with the budget, all the work that's been, being done now, that will be done, uh, once we give it to you, if, if, if the majority on the, on the council wants to totally rewrite the thing, you know, you have the power to do that. Same way with this, except on this one, you got two members of yours, or own, that are on this council. And I don't remember, remember how many people are on it, anybody?
Fifteen.
Huh?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, and then know we got one person that lives in a rural area. I think we got two at least. And Joe, I guess my question is, out of the 425,000 people living in St. Charles County, how many live in rural areas? Because I want to make sure they have proportional representation.
And Joe, I will...
Probably 25 percent.
Well, is it two out of 15?
Twenty-five percent?
You think 25% live in the rural area? It is called rural for a reason, sir.
Joe, I just wanted to say...
Well, how much of our flood, our county, how much, 60% of flood...
Forty-three percent.
Forty-three percent.
Forty-six percent.
Yeah. Chair, I just want to say, I, I know your concerns, I, I, I don't know if I share them. I think the, you know, what we've seen with this process, I think it's going to where, in a direction that your, your area of the county is going to be pleased. That's my opinion, but I say let, let's let it play out. And if you've got concerns, share them with Matt and I, and we'll, I'll be happy to carry them forward, so... And I know Bill Carrier has been in on some of the meetings, so...
All right, thanks, Mike. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Get while they're getting good.
Snuck that one in on them.